I would ask everyone to please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. Robbie, make call please.
Jessica Mead, here. Andy Mary.
Yes.
Noel Deep.
Here.
Mary Newcall.
Yes.
Danny Payet.
Here.
Danielle Yushka.
Here.
JD Schrader.
Here.
JD Wong. And Mike Foley.
Here.
Very good. We'll first move right on to the consent agenda, so be looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the November 27, 2018 meeting. Financial report for November 2018, consideration of current bills, checks number 9454 through 9453, 9 by 43 in the amount of $322,477.88. ACH number 181900563 through 181900651 in the amount of $227,194.56. And one wire transfer in the amount of $88,229.29 for a total of $567,992.66.
Second. Motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Payet. Any questions, comments?
Yes, sorry, I have a mic for... The CISA, what is... Are we still doing all the PLCs and stuff like that? And is that what that... I'm assuming that's what it's going for, and I was just curious.
So can you show me where you are looking? I thought you said CISA?
Yeah, or was it...
Which one?
I don't know which one checklist do you... Maybe, maybe Jason.
No.
No, it wasn't that one. It was the other. I think it looked like a...
We contract with CISA for a number of things. Title I services with KC, Gret Singer. In fact, they were just with us today, combined with the RTI Center, to look at multi-level systems of supports.
Yeah, so...
So, ongoing, right, trainings.
Okay, I kind of figured, and I was just curious as to an update on all that stuff.
Educator effectiveness too is a big one, with Linda Myers.
Okay.
Does she come here often? And sometimes we, depending, like Kelly's going tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
And the PLCs, they're still doing those, but not far away.
Now, I would have to defer. We had one travel this fall, and that was out of state. Do we have any coming up?
No.
Broke Des Moines, and they drove.
There's nothing...
I think the summer, the next ones are summer, right?
Okay.
And we're looking at keeping them within driving distance to be fiscally...
And we're at the point where we can start to have, what is it called? Critical capacity whereby we have enough trained, then we can work with each other and build, you know, district-wide instead of always setting it up.
So we're training the trainer.
Okay, thanks for helping me complete my thought. I was looking at it and going over it, and I'm like, I just haven't talked about it lately. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mary, are you a Chicago Bears fan?
Pardon?
That's not a... A dub for debate at this time. Nonetheless. On the question again, anybody else?
That's really gonna hurt during the election.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Uh, yeah, the financial reports as well. Uh, public comment. Tim, did you sign up?
Nope.
Then be quiet. You got snippy with me. We're gonna have fun tonight, guys, it's Christmas. So, uh, student representative report. Well, I did get a email from young Mr. Deep, who expressed his regret at not being able to be here tonight because he's playing basketball over at Medford with the University of Mercy. So apparently basketball court took priority over us, which is... Uh, but he did send an email, and Dr. Deep was kind enough to send you out our and everybody his notes. I'll go over him real quick so that, uh, he said... And it starts out, this is, "Esteemed board members, please accept this report as the student representative's monthly report. I apologize for not being able to be present to present this personally as I'm on the boys' basketball team playing at Medford this evening." Didn't realize we were esteemed, but I think that's nice. Monday, the 3rd, band students had their annual holiday concert. It was success, and the community had a good time. Uh, December 5th, marching band was in the Christmas parade. Last evening, the local students had their holiday concert, and it sounds like they, everybody had a good time, and it was well-attended. Students that took the PSAT exam in October got their results on December the 12th. Students who will be advancing to the next level of competition will be notified. Basketball teams playing at Medford tonight. They are currently undefeated in conference play. I'm not sure if that's us or Medford.
Us.
Okay. You didn't say it, I like to make sure. Trials for the musical Cinderella are taking place tonight and tomorrow, and practices are gonna start after the holiday break. Hockey team's playing at Lake Glen Union. Hockey team's currently three and one in conference, and only one game back for first place. Girls gymnastics are in a meet tonight against Stevens Point here, and the girls are very excited. They also took third in an invitational last Saturday. The wrestling team and Coach Olson traveled to Shawno this weekend and participated in a meet against several teams. The boys swim team had a meet last Thursday at home against Shawno. Spanish club has met to discuss their trip into summer of 2020, which I believe we said it was okay to do. Students chose between Spain, Peru, and the Dominican Republic. For N16 met to discuss material for the upcoming competitions. And students taking AP Literature and Comp course due to Christmas Carol on December 7th at the Grand Theater in Los... They've been busy, and it's getting close to Christmas. So I would imagine after the holiday season, it will be just as busy. We thank young Mr. Deep for his report and giving all this to us, and appreciate him, and hope to see him here soon. So needless to say, new business, committee of the whole, be looking for motion, please.
Okay. I move the board approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on December 11, 2018.
Second. Yeah, motion from Lou Feld, second from Dr. Deep. You all had a chance to review them. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item B, policies, reading number two. Also looking for motion, please.
I move the board adopt the following policies: the particularosis, class rank, and the administrative protocols.
Second. Okay. Motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Payet. Once again, we all had an opportunity to review these. Any questions, comments?
I think we wore that.
No, we're not. We're... The particular... That thing there. We had a rather lengthy discussion on it, at the committee of the whole, and understand it, I think, about as well as anybody.
Yeah.
None of us are scratching our heads over any of it.
Just a word.
Any questions, comments on those?
No.
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Motion carries. Policies are adopted. Item C, new business is the ESSA report and school-level report.
We talked a little bit about this at the committee of the whole meeting, and I just want to remind the board of a couple things. So really, the whole purpose of this report is as a requirement of the Department of Education to DPI. That DPI must comply when it gets to the school-level report. And DPI worked with 38 states and the University of... Georgetown University, along with 20 board business managers across the state, and developed this school-level report framework. Right now, you're seeing numbers in your, in the report that are budget numbers. DPI, since this is the first go-around, they wanna... So we have to upload our budget, but you don't. We upload that to DPI. These numbers reflect our budget, so they don't reflect expenditures. So that's the first thing. So we will, in August and September of 2019, will have completed this fiscal year, will report expenditures to DPI. And then of June of 2020, DPI is then required to publish the data. So Andy asked me whether we could look at other districts. Those aren't released to the general public yet. I can get access to them, but I think, and we'll get into that a little bit when we talk about the report. I think let's jump in the gun a little bit. Let's first understand what's in the report, and then I think we can use it as a tool within the district before we go outside the district. So the first thing that, that, column A is enrollment. And those enrollments are kids in seats on 3rd Friday, calendar. And what you're gonna notice right away is Pleasant View's at 2:40. And how can Pleasant View be at 2:40? We take our 4K enrollment and we assign it to a school. So those students are assigned to Pleasant View. And what's important to remember when you're thinking about that, what really drives costs? You know, we've talked about staffing as being somewhere between 75 and 80% of our budget cost. Well, we're taking the FTE behind 4K, and those students essentially, they're halftime students. So 85% of our costs associated with educating those kids is cut in half because they're only there two days a week, right? So that's the other thing that reflects. So those numbers reflect that. So let's look at column B, the federal numbers. You know, US board members down the road, you know, what are we getting for federal programs? And if you had to list them, there's really two that you only need to think of. You know, the first one's gonna be title, and then our second one is gonna be idea. You know, those are really the two major things that are impacting at the school level. So that's what you're seeing. And you're seeing where we have title programs and where we have our special education.
Which one's federal per pupil?
Pardon?
Federal per pupil.
So both of those. So what we're done is, they don't want us to get... This is our budget. You know, it's 125 pages. We've taken it down to essentially four or five numbers. So the per pupil cost is taking all those idea and all those grants and bam, assigning it to a school. So that's what you're seeing. But at the per pupil, at the school expenditure level, those are gonna be primarily our Title I and idea expenses assigned to those buildings.
I forgot, what percentage of us is our budget spent on funding? Like 10% or something in that 50% local and 40%...
It's gonna be less than that. I can provide that, I don't have it off the top of my head.
I thought it was something like only 6% local.
And again, it's in the annual report. I can look it up after, but I don't have it off the top of my head. Okay, so it's important to know that that's, those are the federal. And when we look at the state local, they haven't disintegrated. It's just one lump sum. So when you think about why there's such a huge disparity, think about the programs that we have that would be different than the general fund. And our biggest one is gonna be AGR, right? So the Sage AGR numbers are reflected in that per pupil. So you can see where, when we have like an east or we'll go to north and west, you can see in Crestwood, you can see how AGR impacts it. And again, it's the budget. So when we're, what makes it so complicated is we have had carryover. In this last year, we had carryover in both the federal grant programs and in the state grant programs. So these numbers are gonna be higher than they would normally be. And at this level, it's very difficult to say what exactly is that cost, because it's just one number. But the difference is gonna be primarily those grants. The other thing that gets assigned at the state local level are salaries and benefits. So we're compounding where, does that particular school have highly qualified, highly educated, highly paid staff? Or is it a relatively new staff? I mean, they can be highly qualified certainly, but they aren't high on the salary schedule. And our younger, our younger staff members probably don't have family health insurance. So you can see how those costs can vary widely. So then we total that up at the school level, and again, you can see the numbers. So now let's talk about the district share of those costs. And Danny asked the question, why are those numbers all the same? So we're taking centralized costs, and we're dividing it by the total enrollment. So the numbers will be the same. What's eventually gonna happen is DPI, you're gonna be able to go to their website, Google Spring Valley, or Google High School, Annual High School, and you'll get one line report with school-level expenditures, the district-level expenditures, the exclusions, and the total cost. So it's multiple, that's why it's always the same. Eventually, you'll be able to look up individual schools. So at the federal level, if you think of what we're doing, particularly when you start looking at Title II, you know, idea and Title I, those big grant programs, there's coordination, there's professional development, there's training, there's coaching. Those costs get associated at the district level. So that's why when you look at that expenditure level, in some cases, what we're doing at the district level is higher than what we're doing at the school level. And that's why. So let's talk a little bit about the district share of the state and local. That's everything that happens at a central. So when you look at the staffing at Central, when you look at operationally, when we're looking at utilities, transportation, all of that kind of thing, that's coming district-wide, and that's what that number represents. So then in column H, we're essentially taking the school-level costs and adding the district-level costs and coming up with a per pupil district cost. Then the last part of it is looking at this totals. And there's a mistake in the DPI spreadsheet. And so I called them earlier in the week. And what's supposed to happen is column I and column K should add up to column J. And, I'm sorry. Yeah. And it doesn't. So there's an error there. But the point I want to make is the exclusions. If you look at that number, we're looking at almost eight and a half million dollars worth of exclusions. And what are exclusions? So with exclusions, we're looking at capital equipment. So if we're buying stuff that could be a one-time blip on the radar, they exclude that. They excluded all of facility acquisition and remodeling. So if schools have building projects, or like we're doing remodeling projects, they've excluded that cost. They've excluded the Fund 27 transfer as a cost. And they've excluded the Wisconsin parental choice, open enrollment, our Fund 38, Fund 40 is capital equipment. They've excluded food service, they've excluded OPEP trust, and then they've excluded Community Service Fund 80. So everything with the Aquatic Center. And that's how we arrived at the 8.6 million. What I'd like to see us do after consolidation, I think at some point, you know, we want to be transparent. I think that this will help drive decisions about equity. You know, why are we spending per pupil at whatever level, at whatever school? And eventually, it's probably gonna get, they're gonna make the connection to performance. You know, there's no doubt. What I'd like to see us do is not get too overly excited about it now, but in a year or two, as we get consolidated, really look at, particularly at the elementary. You know, our schools are gonna be very, very similar. Our costs should be very, very similar, and our outcomes should be very, very similar. And then when we roll that up, what does the middle school look like? And what are the middle school costs? I was quite surprised when I looked at the high school. You know, we're, I'm always thinking that the high school expenditures would be great. It looks like we're, I mean, by comparison, the numbers are pretty accurate now. They're right in line. So if you're going to the convention, I encourage you to attend one of the sessions on school-level reporting, because I think it will, it's gonna continue to come, and it's gonna continue to be refined. And it's gonna start the conversation of comparing schools within the district, comparing districts between each other, comparing districts within the state, and then comparing Wisconsin to every other state in the country.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds like it's an interesting time, and...
Yeah.
It will, like you said, it's gonna take a couple years for them to get everything together the way they want it, to get the numbers so that it all makes some sense, so yeah.
Well, and what's interesting about this first go-around is Don Schreier puts our project together, and you know, that's a very time-consuming process, and we roll that up. And then DPI, because it's brand-new, they didn't, the data that's presented here is not part of the data we already entered. So this first year, we had to do it twice, so it's been a rush to get it done.
So kudos to Don.
We'll see what the next two years brings. Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
Ready. Let's go to board action items. Crisis plan and safety drill. Looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the crisis plan and safety drill as presented.
Second. Motion from Mr. Payet, second from Ms. Yushka. Everybody have a chance to review them?
I have a, I have two questions. I went through the evaluation reports, and Pleasant View was the only elementary building, wait a minute, I'm not sure about that. I can't remember the high school, where the teachers weren't made aware. All the rest of them checked yes. The teachers were made aware, the kids weren't. And at the high school, the kids were made aware ahead of time.
Yeah.
Because that box was, that, all right, Crestwood, no. West, no. Spring Valley. Pleasant View, where it says, were staff notified prior to the drill? No. Were students notified? No. But then when it got to the high school, where is it? It's probably at the end.
Yep. No, you're right, Mary. And...
And, oh, there you are. Okay. I was talking to him, but you're the safety guy. Okay, so why? Why did the high school kids know about it ahead of time?
That was our full campus evacuation, that we had law enforcement all staged.
And the pictures were in the paper, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was the first of that extreme that we've done in the district.
Okay.
And given the fact that we did have a shooting, to be real blunt about it, we almost wanted to be a little oversensitive to make sure that emotionally, our staff and students were able to handle that.
Okay.
That was done through many discussions at our LEAP level with law enforcement and district administration, and discussed it a number of times to make sure that that was our best choice.
Especially because kids were running out, and then they see one of the police cars.
The cops and everybody are there, yeah.
At the elementaries, it's a little different, smaller setting. They weren't going off-campus, things like that. Then it just... Ideally, I would like to be able to do a drill like that without prior notification anyone.
To anyone.
And I think that that's where we'll be in a year, or maybe a year and a half. But like I said, there is a number of staff and administration concerned that this may be somewhat traumatic, because this is the first drill that we've done like this since the shooting, really. You know, we did a lot of groundwork with discussing all the ALICE protocol. We rolled all that out, we got the staff trained, we got students trained. We're continuing that process. But this is really the first time that we're telling, okay.
This is it.
It's going, let's do the drill, and they're running out, and they're seeing law enforcement there. So we wanted to be somewhat cautious with that.
Okay. And then what, and that's, that's a really good way to do it. But what about Pleasant View? Were the teachers weren't notified?
Nope, they did a surprise one.
And why did they do a surprise there and nowhere else? Just because? You just randomly decided to do a surprise? Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, honestly, I prefer if they're all surprises.
They were all surprises.
Um, but sometimes they're not.
And if you also look at the report, I'd also believe it says north was not notified, no?
Well, I guess I would like some clarification. Is this an ALICE evacuation, or is this fire drill?
This is just a evacuation drill.
So it could be the fire drill?
No. Not. Well, true, this is all stems from DPI in the, sorry, Department of Justice and the requirements for the safety grant. And we have to do recording on our crisis plan. And we have to have it approved by the board, and we have to do evacuations. I called and talked with Ed Dorff, which did our ALICE training, and he kind of explained to me what, he actually had just met with the DOJ and what they're looking for. And they just want to know that we're doing something now, and that we have a plan moving forward. So ideally, they'd like to see that we did an ALICE evacuation drill. I mean, that's the end goal, but they understand that they're in the process that is going to be... We have to go through steps as we get there. That's why in the narrative or the description below, I kind of explain that this spring, really, the DOJ is more focused on not making this as a qualifier or a disqualifier, but making sure that the districts are on the right track.
Okay.
So like with the elementaries, that's our last step of the process. We started training at the high school, got to the middle school. We still haven't done a full campus evacuation at the middle school. Hoping to do that in the spring, and then the elementaries to follow that. And it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot of work to pull it all together. And I wish I could have it all done in a six-month window, but it just...
So the elementaries that are listed here that says evacuation, really did not go through an evacuation?
They didn't go through a full ALICE evacuation, though.
It was more like a fire drill type of a...
Yes.
Get out of the building thing.
Yes.
That's where it was only 42, 45, 46 seconds.
Correct, because they were just to get out the door and good.
And at the high school, it was said, there's an unidentified threat in the fab lab. Please follow ALICE, your ALICE procedures. Because that could have been different for Mr. Kratz in the Woods Department, rather than Mrs. Fisher in her room, you know, I just...
Correct.
So you might exit through a different door, you might choose to stay put there.
And then at the middle school, we had a... We switched all of our protocols from, you know, we used to have these codes and medical emergencies and responses. We kind of combined them into one that's reflected in the crisis plan. Towards the end of last year, they did what we used to call a medical emergency, where we locked down inner rooms, hold place, which is common for a number of responses now with updated crisis plan. So that one qualified more accurately there. Like I said, they really want us to get to where we're doing full evacuations per ALICE protocol. That's the goal.
So that took 15 minutes, so why at the middle...
That was, when I talked with Pam from her records, that was when they first started to tell, they said, all clear. And say you were to take like a bomb threat in that situation, and you sweep in place, you know, that could take, that could take an hour or a half hour, you know.
So that's not 15 minutes to get...
Nope. And it's different. And again, I was a little nervous of this, and I called and talked with Ed Dorff, and he's our ALICE instructor that trained all our trainers, and he's working with the DOJ pretty closely on this. And he, I explained to him the situation where we were at, and that's when he explained that the intent is really to make sure that all the districts are in the process and getting to that full ALICE evacuation compliance is what they really want to see in the end of it. But they're allowing some leniency, whether it be a lockdown or a bomb threat practice, or if you have future plans. That's what they want to see. They want to see that in the narrative. And when I do my reporting in January, they also require a part where it explains the district's relationship with law enforcement. And I'm going to explain in detail a little more on that, on where we've started with ALICE projects, you know, three years ago with LEAP, and how we modeled it after Oshkosh's platform. And explain that in further depth. And I have to upload that to the DOJ website as a milestone for...
And the more training you do with the students, the more familiar they become with the process, the quicker it's gonna grow.
Correct.
I mean, it's just...
It looks like with anything you do, if they get, when they get repetitive of it, we get better.
Yes.
I mean, where I come from, we had fallout drills as a child. You'd get under the desk and go...
Right.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, I have a... I kinda have a, an internal battle with taking these, you know, first and second graders and, and dumping this all on them in one fail swoop, so I, I mean, we need, we need to get them there, but they also need time to process because if we just traumatize them, it's doing more harm than good. So.
With the little ones, do you get the parents involved with that to let them know they can do some explaining at home, I'm sure?
We do, we've notified parents along, on every step of the way and that's another process that just takes a little more time of planning and slows the entire process down, but we feel very strongly that that is required, that we can't just be doing these trainings without, first of all, the knowledge of the parents for safety reasons, but the support so that they can continue it. And actually in the elementary ones, um, we're gonna, we're going to invite the, the parents if they'd like to come and observe during that. Just again, as you have younger and younger kids, parents, that hits a little closer on the farm.
Did you have to make this plan from scratch or did they have like a template or is it partially a combination of policies?
They have, they have this template. They, the OJs have, or offered it for us to use and fell.
That'd be a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
Yep.
It looks like you did bring your job up quick right there. Any other questions, comments? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Out of B, course proposals, high school, let, this is you.
Um, three out of the five course proposals that you have in front of you are for, we're seeking for dual credit purposes. None of the courses that are proposed are going to be, um, an increase in staffing, so those courses are either taught simultaneously in one of the cases, they're replacing a low attendance elective, or they are, um, they're taught instead of, oh no, I already got that part, so they're, they're taught in combination with another class like the cabinet and furniture design. So it would be kind of a, a elevated level of, of coursework, the NTC coursework for some of the students in that class and then the, the furniture design class would be taught at the same time the level two course, but they would be, have some different curriculum that Mr. Krutz would, would do on that. There is, uh, on the metals one, which is titled the machine tool programming, so that would be a decrease in the amount of sections that metals one is offered. But it would not be decreasing the amount of offerings that we have, if that makes sense. Um, in conversations with Kelly, we had talked about firming up a, a process protocol for the course proposals and an evaluation of those course proposals, including a standards audit for those different courses right now and for the NTC dual credit ones, I mean, those were, we're using NTC's curriculum for, for the other pieces, they're really, um, I'll be honest, teacher created courses in terms of what they're covering in those courses and those are going to replace low attendance elective courses at the high school. There's a couple of different options on there for the courses that they would replace, like for the theater and film one and we're gonna have to look at what students are wanting, you know, for those options.
And three of those courses, um, would be dual, would offer more, more options for dual credit.
Yep.
So there'd be three additional dual credit options and then we also looked at, um, making sure that they didn't replace an AP course because we find that was very valuable for our students. And, um, looking fiscally, making sure that they didn't, um, require more overloads for the teachers as well.
So what questions do you have on those five courses?
Are the counselors getting questions about these classes?
Not yet.
I know they're not open for the students.
Um, and when I talked with Anita beforehand, she said, we need to make sure that we do a good job of talking to the school counselors about these courses, talking to the students about what courses are gonna be available. And then getting them in the course book right, or getting them into the campus right away so we can line up the schedules.
With some of the tech and, and engineering stuff, is a lot of that based on feedback we're seeing from the business community? Where businesses are looking at people coming in, I see Ed nodding in the back of the room, so apparently a monitoring trap. But it's, it's due to the job market demand and stuff that, that most businesses are looking for young people coming out of school, being better prepared for the job market and this would help do that.
Yeah, there's also, um, some other discussions that have been going on with this course proposal process. Excuse me, in terms of like a, a trades mat type of offering and it's, that's bigger than what we could accommodate here because that requires some, some definite, um, research we'll say. So we're, and, and we're always in conversations with NTC about different dual credit offerings. Um, just today, we were talking about a pre-CNA class for credit, we're also talking about a dual credit class for, um, I can't remember the course title of it, but soft skills really, it's a course offered by NTC that has not been offered before at any high school for dual credit, but.
Which was, and that was direct feedback from our business partnerships when, we've been having a lot of pre- pretty frequent meetings with our, the North Central, I mean, the tech and then all of our business affiliates and that was overwhelmingly what they said that they really needed to see, so we got that.
And that's something we touched on at the committee of the whole workshop too.
Have you talked much about electricity course with the tech, like IT one or something? It's like DC one? Like with resistors, have they ever talked about that?
Not specifically, no.
We think.
We, we haven't talked about a dual credit option there, not saying that we couldn't.
We just think we're talking about it cause when your farmers are always trying to hire someone who might be able to fix the conveyor, you know, or it gets you more interested. It's like a direct application of engineering because then you, you're physically starting to design circuits and things.
Yeah, and one of the things that we talked about too at our last, one of the last, um, NTC meetings, when we met with Wachah Barings was just looking at our career, career clusters, looking at all of our course offerings and really looking at how do we change our course offering book to really align with the different career clusters and make sure that we have good alignment with ACP. And then that goes right along with looking at just all of our courses and making sure that all of them are aligned to the standards. Supporting ACT standards, which we're delving into this year as well and then also that college and career readiness piece too. So we're looking at making a lot of changes, but we wanna do that with our staff, with NTC and, um.
Solidifying that process.
Mm-hmm, and making sure that it's just really well thought out.
Is there, there was a teacher when I was here that taught a computer programming class or two? Does that still happen in the school or do we outsource that or do we not really offer that anymore? It was like C++ or something a couple of years ago.
One of the things that we're, I mean, I don't have that answer off the top of my head, but one of the things that we're looking at is really solidifying our curriculum so that doesn't change over with staff members. So we wanna make sure that we're offering, um, solid course offering that supports our standards and our careers um, rather than just changing over with whatever the teacher likes to teach.
Maybe it should be like that.
So I don't know, we'll look at that.
When you.
We don't specifically teach a core.
Class computer programming. Core, yeah, there was, yeah, two or something, there was only like five kids in it, but at least no one of them would computer program.
Well, that's a, that's another thing, you know, with, in order to, you know, run these courses, we've gotta have the attendance in those courses. And that's why we talked about with the, the ELA and the social marketing courses, replacing a course of four attendants that doesn't, you know, isn't physically responsible to run that section. Andy, were you gonna say something?
When you meet with NTC and business partners, is, is there somebody from the agricultural sector of business?
So we just start, we, at our last meeting, we, I brought that up, it was right when I had talked to you and I said, the next, so we're looking at really building it to be more representative of the whole community, so we talked about, um, having a representative from the economic, um, committee that you're on, the development committee. And then having, making sure we have those representations from those three large areas that are part of that committee.
So right now, I would say no, it's specific to manufacturing.
But we're building that, so that's our next step.
Yeah.
And we also.
That was mentioned by one of the manufacturers though, that there are people that should be at the table right now that aren't. And, and we talked about that, it could be because it's labeled a manufacturer's, you know, manufactured breakfast.
Maybe you oughta change the label.
Well, we've been having a lot of different conversations with NTC regarding how do we expand that? And so at our last meeting, which was maybe last week or whatever it was, we have been, we were planning our in-service day. And it is specifically around building, um, or it's about, it's, what is the focus? With, it's Wachah Barings and, um, the manufacturing, um, strand, but then we wanted to expand it to the agricultural strand and then the third one, um, that's on the economic development website and then we looked at, we've talked about as a whole committee, just looking at all those different businesses that are on that website alone and looking at, um, just building our staff and our families and our students' knowledge of what we have in Anago because even the people on that committee who have been in the community for a very long time, didn't even realize some of the great businesses that we have. So.
Or what goes on behind the name of the business.
Right.
You know, as you see, and Anago Neon was at, one of the manufacturers that was at that meeting said, you know, I grew up seeing at the Anago Neon, but I, I don't have any idea what goes on behind the, the site, you know?
So we really wanted to reach out to each one of those businesses and we even talked about, I mean, the conversation was a lot of different ways, but just how do we advertise or how do we work with those businesses to advertise in, um, a different type of fashion that speaks to our students of what really would appeal to them about that business, so we talked about just even just a short brochure, you know, working with the businesses that would be interested in. NTC helped, said they could help with that, so it's going a lot of different great directions, I feel like, but the more input and feedback we have from, from more at the table will be beneficial.
One of the comments that a staff member had made is like, well, what if, you know, what if kids don't wanna go into the manufacturing room? You know, why, why does it only need to be them? You know, if you get a comment from a parent like that. And Greg, who is the dean of something or other at NTC, I'm still trying to piece together names and positions. But he talked about, well, we do have a lot of manufacturing in the Anago community. And if we don't provide a workforce for the, those manufacturers, they're not going to stay for one reason or the other, you know, either they're not gonna make enough profit and they're gonna fold or they're gonna move to a place where they can get those workers. And then we all know what happens to the, you know, the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say mill town, cause I'm, you know, I spent the last decade in Wisconsin Rapids area and you know, there are talks about all what happened when, you know, the Ford Edmilch mill closed down and this used to be this and that and the other things, but.
And then the town dies.
It's a huge economic impact to everybody in the community, you know, and so we're all connected to that, so that, that is a big piece in Anago and we, instead of saying, well, we need to market everything, we've, we've kind of got a niche, I would say, in terms of, um, some of those CT, some of that CTE program, you know? And I remember that even from when I was in high school, hearing about Anago CTE offerings. So it's a niche that I think we need to be proud of and that we need to strengthen.
Yeah, I was at the tech in Wausau the other day talking to the instructors of that advanced manufacturing associate degree or something and they have Greenheck doing apprenticeship with like ten people. And so they take industrial electronics, one, two, three and four at the tech and a couple of other classes at the same time they're getting trained over there. So if you could get a few classes out of those, wait while you were in school, you know, then into those companies, like I know Vol hired a couple of them.
Yeah, we're looking at expanding the youth apprenticeship, apprenticeship options for our students too and looking at what are the barriers that our businesses are seeing and some of the things that they shared was just that it's sometimes viewed by their corporate offices who may be in Texas or maybe wherever else, that it's a union type of thing and so they try to stay away from that. So one of the action items that we had out of that was just, how do we communicate with corporate to let them know that this is not an actual apprenticeship through a union, it's a youth apprenticeship, which is quite different. So it's good to have these conversations and to find what the root cause of the barriers are for our students. So a lot of good things are coming out of that.
And GD, part of what Greenheck did really well, cause I was in on the, the groundwork of the youth apprenticeship at Greenheck. Part of what they did really well is they didn't say, this one guy came up with this idea of youth apprenticeship and went out, he said, okay, and went, talked to the union president and talked to a, a number of other people and that union president was in, um, the formation of the youth apprenticeship, which I think they did really, really well at Greenheck, cause they're, this is the first year that, yeah, I think this is the first year that they've run youth apprenticeship through Greenheck and they're a company of thirty-five hundred employees, you know, it's a huge, huge company in our area. And we, we did have them in earlier in the year, you know, I mentioned.
I remember you saying that it would be like how you guys did it a lot.
Yeah.
We still have apprenticeships through, uh, the business department and the.
We do, but we're looking at growing it.
Yeah.
Because we don't.
So what are those apprenticeships, where do they fall right now, are they in the youth apprenticeship program or where?
Um.
We, we offer a lot of youth apprenticeships, you know, and that's really the, the agreement by the company to abide by, you know, a certain set of expectations to have a student worker for them. And that can, you know, Greenheck starts it off with observation hours and they pay them for observation hours on whichever role that they're fitting into and then they have them working certain hours a week and they're flexible on breaks or, you know, winter break or holiday spring break or whatever it is. And then they, they want that youth apprenticeship there because they wanna offer them a job, you know, if they're good, they wanna keep them, they wanna retain them. And that's the message we've been getting from everybody, including Wachah Barings here, they're saying, we want qualified workers. We want the, the workers with these qualities and how do we, how do we reach them at a younger age, they're realizing that, you know, this just hoping that, hope is not a strategy, but hoping that they get this robust pool of workers isn't helping, so how are they reaching them younger? And this, so more businesses are wanting to get involved in the youth apprenticeship thing so they can kind of get their foot in the door with those future employees.
So lots of good stuff.
Yeah, Wachah Barings has been doing this for a long time, right? They have the.
Yeah, yeah.
The program where they would let kids, give them projects to work on in school as well as.
Yeah, they do bring in some, some different like equipment that needs repair and stuff like that, parts that need to be created. Right now, they're helping, their maintenance department is out looking at some different machines that are in need of repair in the, in the metal shop. They're just, they're a good partner to have.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
Any other questions? I think we do need a, a motion here to approve the, uh, proposal summary.
I guess, are you worried about us being able to pay for the eight thousand dollar machines after the tech won't hit the first year? Or will we be able to figure that out some time?
I don't know, yet. Uh, I know we're getting one simulator that NTC, one at some, some organization thing and they donated it to the high school. So we're getting one of those simulators and, um, they did say that the other ones that we could borrow um, for sure for next school year, I don't know about after that, it depends on, I guess, their demand for them, really. So that's why I just put in there that we assess the need for those simulators after this year. I, I would say I'm concerned about us putting any kind of expenditure out there, especially something of that magnitude, I mean, that eight thousand dollars is a lot of money. So I think we need to look at everything through a fiscally responsible lens, but, so yeah, I am concerned about that, but at the same time, what is the course? But, so yeah, I am concerned about that, but at the same time, what is the course offering and how's the demand for that? What is, what are the businesses saying about it?
Some motion to approve the courses, please.
Motion from Dr. Deep second for Zuzka. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, item C, construction house offered to purchase. Let's get a motion on the board, please.
I move the board accept the bid for the 2018-19 construction house to see for Martin Dawn and the amount of $28,000.
Second.
Okay, motion from Dr. Deep, second for Ms. Zuzka. Discussion.
Good job.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on the bid that it said the minimum bid would be $50,000.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two it was.
Yeah, so what, what's typical, Andy, you know, we've, if we, somewhat shoot ourselves in the foot by the advertise, we were hoping to get somebody in, you know, August or September, and that didn't happen. Right now, Jordan has got expenditures of $50,000. Last year, we, he's, you know, Jordan, if you want to talk about it, he tweaked the design quite a bit. And it's a really nice looking floor plan. And so we've got a little bit more in materials, material costs are up a little bit. We've spent 50, last year we got $45,000 for the house. And-
Plus we saved on a couple of the others.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I mean, we expend for materials and supplies in all of our classes that we offer, but so.
So that $50,000, that's pretty much all the expenditures that are going to happen on that house?
As long as there's obviously no extenuating circumstances. I mean, if our compressor blows up tomorrow, we're going to have to figure out something for a compressor, but.
You know, I would say the, the tech end budget will have to net zero because we've, we've allocated $50,000 for supplies and that's what we spent. And if the compressor goes somewhere between metals and graphics and auto, they're going to have to net zero. Any other questions?
No, you lagged, aren't you?
The other comment that I'd like to make is meeting Mr. Dorn and his wife. You know, I always tell potential buyers that this is a student project, it's not a custom-built home. And he seems very understanding of that and really excited to work with Jordan and the students. And I think will be a good fit for us.
What's nice too is it's not done and it's been a while since we've had someone, I mean, and they can weigh in on it as it's built, which is just a blessing too. Which may be a nightmare too.
It would be. Those decisions I have to make them. So they can call, make all the calls and be good.
Any other questions?
I appreciate your safety consciousness, stick out your head.
All those in favor of accepting the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The bid is accepted. Good work there.
Thank you.
Item D, we have no new hires this month, so we're just going to gloss right over that. To item E, donations. Looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the following donations. $100 from an anonymous donor for the children's sports project. $200 from William D for children's shoes and clothing at North Elementary. $100 from the Langley County preacher, 120440ET8 for the Special Olympics. $500 from Antigo Junior Women's Club for the Novocan School Course Building Project. $500 for the hydrotite for the choir program. And $500 from Johnson Gentle, Cole, Morgan, and Wisconsin FFA Foundation for the AHS Green House. Total donation of $1,900.
Second.
Okay, motion from Ms. Zuzka, second from Ms. Nufeld. Any questions on any of these?
Thank you.
Other than the fact that we're very appreciative of, once again, our community stepping up and helping out. It's nice stuff.
Did we get the new scoreboards up in the gym? When does that happen this summer? Heard the new T came, fans are going to be like-
No, no, it's going to be this, this one. I have a, have you heard?
We ordered them the night after the event, but I, I don't know where they are.
They've got to be close. I'll, I'll, I'll try and get an update. We can send it out, Julian, who's at it?
Then we can walk down there and see them.
Friday morning.
Maybe introduce the board on the big screen.
So I would be like way cool. During the basketball game and, and Nathan can do his-
So JD, are you-
The studio board is so important.
Remind me to get a new sweater for that one.
JD, are you suggesting that we do the spotlight entries for you all to be presented?
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
But no one else can be there because I don't want to go and see them.
Fist ups.
Just runs.
Yeah. Be careful what you wish for.
You don't want to run?
On a roll.
Since we're getting off, since we're getting off a topic, let's come back here and, all those in favor of approving the donations, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And we thank our generous community once again. Item F, resignations. Be looking for motion, please.
I move the board accept the resignations of Thomas May High School Special Education Teacher effective December 21st, 2018. And Dawn Schrader, Accounting Specialist effective January 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Second.
Second from Dr. Deep. Motion was by Ms. Nufeld. Any discussion?
So Mr. May, was this, didn't he just start recently?
He did.
Thought it came from somewhere. I'd be qualified. Do you remember?
Um, we, should we cover that information as well?
Anyway, let's, let's have that discussion in close since we're going to be talking personal matters. Okay.
Well, Dawn certainly has put in a number of years in the district and a great person and a good employee. I hate to see her leave, but-
Then what you going to do without her?
The job's posted, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you had any applicants?
We can make a-
We'll talk about that later. So, all right. So there is a motion in front of us to accept the resignations. Any other discussion on that particular portion of it? All those in favor of the acceptance of the resignations, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We accept them regrettably, but we do accept them. Next official board meeting, monthly morning, will be January 29th. And it was moved out of week due to the state school convention, which some of us will be at on January 22nd through about the 25th. So we got that going for us. So at this point, we will be looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to a sub since section 19.85 per MC of the state statute, considering employment and/or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss personal matters. We have a motion for Mr. Pyatt, second for Ms. Zuzka. Roll call vote, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Maldeep?
Yes.
Mary Nukow?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yurzka?
Yeah.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Holby?
Yes. We are officially in closed, but before all y'all leave-